Hi everyone, welcome to the next episode of Decanted with Dave Grega. I'm here with my guest Bernie Narvaez. Did I say that correctly?
Yeah, you got it right, man.
Just discovered I was saying his name wrong for a long time. And I looked at the way it was spelled and I realized it didn't add up. It's like, how do you actually Narvaez? And I'm not pronouncing that correctly, but I'm really excited to have him here for many reasons. Bernie is an elected member of the Napa City Council. And before that has had an incredible background in history, including being a Marine, being a combat veteran, and starting having his own business, building his own business, developing that. And just a lot of really other cool stuff and the story is amazing. So I'm really happy to sort of decant that story a little bit and just kind of have a free flowing conversation with Bernie. I do know Bernie and so I have, I have a little background on him, have some past experience. But part of the fun of this whole thing is that I even get to learn a little bit more about people that I do know. And there's always something else to discover. So we're going to kind of try to get into this. And I like to start out Bernie by kind of going through the origin story. And you have a really cool origin story. And I think it's very just, I mean, it's, it's, I was reading through it and it was just writing something like a novel. It was really cool. So why don't you talk a little bit about, you know, where you started, where were you born? How did you end up here? Yeah, what's your kind of origin story?
Yeah, well, first of all, thank you for having me. It's a pleasure to be here and talk to you a little bit more. We do know each other, but we don't know each other that well. And I feel this is a great opportunity, I agree. So happy to be here. My story, you know, I was born in Mexico. My family and I, we, I grew up in, well, I was born in Massatlan, Mexico. For those that don't know, it's on the west side of Mexico, in the Pacific. It's a place where there's a lot of food and music. And my dad was in the merchant Marines. He spent a lot of time, I believe he's naval engineer. I don't remember exact title, but he was actually became a captain. And, you know, I remember running around in ships for a while, Baja California and then that bay and that area. And but, you know, the industry just changed, you know, economically, it just tanked. And, you know, like many people around the world, you know, you look at America as an opportunity. And we came here to seek opportunities for a better life. And, you know, very grateful and just still in awe to this day that my parents were willing to start over that level of sacrifice. Cause now, this year, my daughter, my oldest daughter, five years old. That's how old I was when I came here. And I'm almost the same age that my dad was when it started over.
So you're thinking about it to that length?
Man, if I had, yeah, exactly. It just hit me maybe about a month ago, when I was like, oh damn, my daughter's gonna be five. And I'm thinking, I was five. And it's just, this whole new perception just fell on me about, you know, my struggles versus my dad's struggles. And basically the same time in life, right? And if I had to go through what he went through, I don't know how I would do it. I have my challenges, but man, I just did go through something like that. I have a different level of appreciation for that.
Right. So tell me a little bit about that. Like, how does it go from you're around five years old? You know, your dad, you're, you're in Mexico and you end up in America. So that's like, what was this sort of decision? Like your dad had to make a choice, like what's, you know? And how did that process go? What do you remember from that?
What I remember is, hey, we're gonna go, we're gonna go to Disneyland. Like what, what do you tell a five-year-old?
I love it, man.
Yeah, man, they're like, this, like, what's Disneyland? And, and you know, what's funny is like with my kids, if I tell them something, they'll remember forever. They'll, if something excites them, if I said, we're gonna go do something, like dad, remember you said that? And I remember doing that to my parents, because we, we came here poor, we can go Disneyland. And until like, maybe 10 years later, we finally went. I was, you know, yeah, I was a teenager. So about 10 years later, we actually took the trip to Disneyland, was finally able to go there. But really, it's making it, you know, what I remember is that transition, it felt more like a trip. It felt, you know, that there was, there wasn't a lot of chaos. It's just a decision that they made. I mean, it wasn't a happy decision to have to do that. But it wasn't like, hey, pack your bags, we gotta run. You know, it's not like that. It was, hey, we have to start over. We gotta take this risk. We see an opportunity, we're gonna go for it. We're gonna, it's gonna change our lives, but it's gonna be better. And that's how I remember it. But, you know, there were some challenges. I mean, got here because we didn't have a place to live. We were, remember living, you know, staying in couches and living rooms. You know, as a kid, not having toys, there were my own toys. You know, driving and cars that we didn't know that, or who, who had taken us to a place we needed to be. And eventually we ended up in a little shack behind this Mexican market that you know, was like a tool shed or something. They got converted, you know, you got a bathroom, you had, or I think it was a garage, I don't know. But, you know, at that, at that time, there's a lot of love and support. My family was very fortunate to have parents that, you know, were, that cared for us, right? And we didn't know that we were poor. Like, yeah, I couldn't tell until later on. Right. So eventually we, we ended up in affordable housing. We rented there for a long time until I got out of high school and went in the Marine Corps. Then my dad was able to buy a home out of town. And then, you know, that, that entered the phase of my adult life. But before that, you know, I just, my parents tried to keep me busy, make sure I didn't get in trouble. So I played all sports, activities, you know, I went to teen centers. So there was a lot of somewhat structure, I think, to help with, with the military.
Right, right. So, which, which is really cool. Before, before we get into that, I mean, this is incredible. Like you're, you come over here and you're starting from scratch. But you have this family unit and this bond, this, this family structure that really creates a, almost a safe environment in that chaos and uncertainty, which is really cool and really telling, you know? And it shows a lot about your parents and what kind of people they were. And it shows through you too. But your dad ended up getting into the insurance business eventually, right? How did that, how did that come to be? And do you remember how that happened? You just got a job in the insurance business and built, built his own business? How did that work?
Yeah, one thing about my dad, he is incredibly stubborn and smart guy. So when he sees the way, he figures it out. And he started, and him and my mom, my mom, you know, she, she worked her ass off too, you know? And to provide, you know, and, and the jobs they did, you know, knew from, from working in the fields to a lot of, you know, manual labor work. I remember my dad was telling me a story about working at a car dealership where he was detailing cars and wanted to be a car salesman. You wanna be a car salesman, you know? And they kind of belittled him, saying, no, you can't do that, you know? Cause he was learning English though. It's like, you can't, we think you can succeed here. Like he, he took a lot of shit as an immigrant and learning, cause he didn't learn English until he was my age now, right? So imagine if he, at least in the way where you have to speak every day, basically to survive, right? It's not like you're in another country, once in a while you taught a different language. You know, if at this age, I had to learn French or German or some other language that's not even close to what I'm speaking now, would be incredibly difficult, right? So, you know, he went through a lot of, I think, challenges. And because of his stubborn nature, it didn't get to him, you know? So he, he found that the insurance industry would, would provide him some financial freedom. Where you have to depend on, on an hourly wage, right? Cause he did so many different jobs from dishwashing to car detailing to working on, you know, salvage yards, all kinds of stuff. He did what he had to do. And he, he, with, with insurance, he started in life insurance and then auto insurance. He built his clientele. I think he told me his first paycheck and commission was like a couple of dollars, right? And it's like, there was kind of a nervous thing going on when you came home with that kind of checks. Like you're starting a business, this is where you're at, you know? You start somewhere, man, you gotta have faith. And you have, you have to have that stubborn mentality, alright?
It's almost like this long vision.
Yeah.
That's, that's awesome. So, okay, so you grow up now and you mentioned that your parents had you involved in sports. So tell me a little bit about like the sports and activities and kind of what set the framework for you eventually getting into the Marine Corps and doing that whole thing?
Yeah, so it was my parents and my oldest brother, because he played, he really started the youth sports in the family. He played football. I went to Sonoma High, so I played football out there. And before that was Pee Wee football.
Right.
And I just loved the game. I loved the intensity, you know? When you're a kid, you're playing those, the helmet and the pads, you don't feel like, you know? You have a really wild imagination. And you see these NFL players, these big, strong, like athletes. And you're like, that's, you know, I'm, I'm gonna channel them, you know? As a 11-year-old wearing these pads that makes you bigger than, than you are. It was just exciting, right? And then you start playing, you learn the sport and you learn the challenge of teamwork and, and discipline and physical activity and, and, you know, and get stronger. And then you hit somebody, the first kind of impact. And I was like, oh, I like this. I want more of this, right? Cause I tried other sports. I tried soccer and soccer was fun, but there wasn't that impact. There wasn't that, for me, person, other, I mean, it's, that, that could be a pretty aggressive sport too, right? It's just a different style.
Different style, yeah.
Yes.
Alright, so you're playing sports. You're also doing some wrestling too, right?
Yeah, I did wrestling, because I make the basketball team.
Wrestling is a tough sport. I mean, wrestling's like conditioning.
It was meant to be, man.
Yeah.
It was meant to be. Because when I, you know, I, some of my friends were playing basketball, like, I wanna play. And I was very disappointed. And then I hear yelling and the whistle and all this movement down, like a couple rooms down. I'm like, what is that? I go over there wrestling, I'm like, what is this? You know, and again, like football, it's like there's more impact. There's tossing around, you, you know, you, you grab somebody, toss them and like, whoa, okay. Let's check this out. And I got hooked and I did that all the way to a little bit the SRJC, you know? And it's a sport that I just fell in love with.
So now, what year did you graduate high school?
2003.
Oh, so same year, right? Okay. So I remember where I was during nine 11, sophomore year in high school. Where were you? What do you remember about nine 11 and that whole thing? How did that impact you?
That changed my life, at least what I thought, where I was headed in life. So for me, I, so I had a, a, what I think we call the zero period. So you have an early class.
Yeah.
So I'd take the city bus to school. So I'd get up early and I got some reason extra early. And I was like, you know what? I got some time, I'm gonna turn on the TV and watch the news, which I never do. And I, I see this and my, you know, I mean, I'm a teenager, I'm, I'm not really, you know? I'm not as bright as, or aware of things as, as I think I am now, even a little bit more. But I'm thinking, what kind of pilot would fly their plane? Like, that was an accident, right? I was like, like, you can see that, you can see that building a mile away, like, what's going on? I think terrorists didn't even cross my mind at that time. Not until I got to the classroom and the teacher's like, it's a terrorist attack, it's, we're, you're under attack. It's, and then everything changed. It's like, what do you mean? You know, and here I am thinking back to the, the story of my family coming to this country. This country really with open arms, right? Even though there's challenges, but at the core, you know, the foundation is the opportunity, right? And I felt that somebody was attacking me.
Yeah.
And I took it very personal, you know? So, you know, at the time, I'm thinking, okay, well, I'm gonna do college. You know, I was really into AutoCAD. So thinking, maybe I'll do, I'll be an architect. You know, so I was kind of really following that, that path of design and AutoCAD and kind of buildings. And I was trying to, I was actually talking about doing an internship with a local architect at the time. And it was that, you know, he was gonna take me under his wing and mentor me. And I just, I changed, I just dropped it. I was no longer interested in that.
Is that like a media, are you thinking about the military right away kind of thing? Or how did that happen?
It, it was like this internal thing that said, you know, I need to be, I need to do something. Like I felt helpless, you know? And honestly, I felt a little ashamed from my initial reaction, thinking it was a, an accident. And then, you know, it's like, someone's being hurt and you don't think they're being hurt. You know, you could have done something earlier. You know, it's kind of ridiculous to think that way, but that was like my reaction. So I felt, you know, obligated, I felt a responsibility, a sense of duty to, to be part of something greater myself. You know, you know, this is my home that, that allowed us to be here, a safe and, and safe place where we had opportunity. And I didn't want to sit back and not be grateful and not do something about it.
That's incredible. Yeah, it's, it's interesting to think about, you know, we're the same age in kind of juxtaposing that experience. I kind of feel, felt very similarly, you know, emotionally about it. And, you know, people often ask me like, oh, you know, you must've grown up so fast in the military. And really for me, the big, I grew up instantly on nine 11. Because I was very naive, you know? Like I kind of had the same response too, like, how did that, how does that happen? Cause the real world didn't exist in, in my experience, really, you know? And so naive and it, and then feeling this flood of emotion of like, people are dying and I can't help them. Like feeling ashamed of just being some kid and like, you know, private, I was in private school. And I just felt like, just like I want, I needed to help people that were getting hurt and I couldn't do that. And I felt also like this amazing place was, was under attack. It was like my family was under attack. And it kind of just made me like grow up, having to face all those emotions and thoughts. And that reality of like, the world trade centers could be completely demolished, like, and thousands of people killed. Like that is something that didn't exist in my reality. And it was like, that was rough to digest, you know?
And I think you put it was, it's our view of the world changed that day. You know, cause, you know, you're thinking, you know, who am I gonna, must sit next to the girl I like in class? You know, to like, man, what's going on in the world? You know, like you, you go from this kind of micro lens view of how your life is affected. And just looking at things that you can see, right? Just in front of you, but you don't really think about beyond that, beyond the school and beyond your family. And this changed everything.
So how do you get into the Marine Corps? How's that process go?
I visited recruiters, I went, I saw all of them, you know? And none of them really got my attention, you know? It's funny, and they recruited like, yeah, you know, catch hell, play Xbox and, you know, it's like, it's not really what I'm looking for, you know? And I go to the Air Force and it's like, you know, it's more like a college thing. And it's like, well, I could've just done that one, be an architect, I don't really wanna do that. And the army, I don't know, the army didn't seem like it had, maybe didn't have like the jobs I wanted. And I go on the Marine, see the Marine recruiter is like, yeah, you gotta earn this. You wanna come in here, you got, you got some fun, but we're gonna kind of kick your ass for a little bit. You have to earn it. And, you know, you're gonna be one of, you know, best warriors in the world. I'm like, alright, let's go. Like, you know, it kind of sold itself, you know? I wanted to, if I was gonna join the military, I wanted the biggest challenge. I wanted to join the best and, and, you know, I wanted to retest myself. You know, I, I wanted the hardest one, basically.
Yeah, it's interesting, because, you know, the army wasn't my first choice. It's actually Marine Corps. And for a lot of the same reasons, I mean, I, first of all, I thought they had the coolest uniforms.
Still do.
And I'm naive, I thought that like, when you became a Marine, you got a sword. And I was like, dude, that's.
And for the audience, Dave, Dave, he, he, he joined the army.
Right, yeah, yeah.
You might hear a little, a little back and forth between those.
Yeah.
Brother branches.
Healthy, but I, I wanted to be a Marine, because I, for a lot of same reasons. I was like, these guys are badass, they're warriors, that's what they do, you know? And the uniforms look cool, like, they just look like the most squared away. They were there to fight. And I was coming fresh off nine 11, you know, a couple of years before, the war was just about to ramp up. And I was feeling like I wanted to be in the action, you know? But I couldn't get into the Marine Corps because I was too heavy. I couldn't get in. I was too heavy. Now, I was always an athlete, I played rugby, played a lot of sports, but I was a big guy. And I was like 275 in high school, but I could, I could move around. So, and I just, I'd always been that way. And so I couldn't get into the Marine Corps, they just wouldn't take me. It was one of those things where they did the, they measure your neck and your waist. And so I was just screwed because of my ratios. And I just couldn't, it didn't matter how much weight I lost, like I, it was gonna take like, I would've had to lose a hundred pounds just to, you know, even think about taping at that. And I wanted to get in fast, because it was like the war's starting. So I ended up going to the Air Force, they denied me too, I was too big. I ended up going to the Navy, same thing, sorry, can't come in here. I was like, crap. And the Air Force guy actually walked me to the Army recruiter and he said, these are the only people that will take you. And it was because the army's so big, that they have a lot of quota. And so they had a waiver where I could get in with an extra 4% body fat. And so that's how I got in the army. But yeah, so I, I wanted to be a Marine too. Marines definitely appealed to me for a lot of reasons. So, so you get into the Marine Corps, you're all signed up. Can you tell me a little bit about your experience in like basic training and then getting into your first line?
Yeah.
Is that like?
First of all, when I joined, the, the other part that not a lot of people know is I wanted to be a fighter pilot. I wanted to fly jets, man. I wanted to be in the sky and fly. You know, I was, yeah, well, I was like, okay, my dad did the ship thing. I don't, I don't wanna do the same thing he did. He was in the ocean, I wanna be in the air. Like, I wanna be a Marine officer, high school, you know, jets and just like raining hell from above. But, you know, I was still a resident, you know, I wasn't a citizen yet. And I didn't have, and I wore glasses, so it didn't work for me. So, but I joined infantry and I did that thinking, okay, I'll do a PLC, student leader scores. So, so I'll do that and then be an officer, but it just, it didn't work out. My path was just, you know what, I'm gonna stick to infantry unit and then, you know, move from there. So there was a moment where I wanted to make a career out of it. But it just, it wasn't a path for me. So I did six years, did a tour in Iraq. Boot camp was in MCRD San Diego. You know, you go to sleep at night, you look out the window, you see these planes leaving, and like, take me with you.
Be in San Diego, but then be in this little hell.
Yeah, right?
Yeah.
A hell inside paradise.
I mean, Marine, Marine, they call it, they don't call it boot camp, it's Marine, what is it?
Boot camp. The basic training, but really, we, it's, in terms of boot camp.
Sure. I mean, it's notorious, it's, it's probably the hardest basic training boot camp of all the branches, most intense. And, I mean, what was that, just briefly, like, what was that like? What were some of your like highlights or some of your moments in that training?
You know, you, you get in, you have your, your period of kind of enrolling in. You know, they, they check you medical, you get your clothes. So, so before you get into your, your, your unit, your platoon, you, you have a, I forget what the term is, it's been so long. But what, what you're doing now, you kind of just, you're, you're in limbo, you're kind of waiting. This anxiety kind of like, you see all these other recruits have been there for a long time. Some of them look sharp and then you see some in the first week, just look a bunch of, just like, Damn. Unorganized, you know, individuals. And then you see this almost ready to graduate platoon and they're just clean, crisp and they're marching. And it looks like one person, right? And it's, so you, you, you're coming in, you're seeing all the different phases, like, I cannot wait to be right there.
Yeah.
But to get there, you have to go through so much. The first week, me, they introduce you to drill instructors. You sit down and they come out like raging pipples, man.
Yeah.
And it's just an introduction from hell.
Yeah.
It's like, oh, this is your teacher, they're gonna teach you, this is the syllabus, like, no. It's like, ah, like line up, you know, it's just like, oh, fuck, right? Oh, it's great, it's great. Full metal jacket wasn't far from, at least in the first part of the movie, it wasn't far from, from reality. I mean, there, there's a lot of things there as far as, and they, but the yelling, I mean, there's a purpose to that, right? That, that level of intensity that you go through, that you're tested to be able to think, right? And react and decide and, and a moment of, of chaos and a moment of constant stress. That's a, that's, that's the purpose to that yelling, to, to that hurry up, right? Always tested, if you do that continuously, you, you adapt your mind and your body and your thought and, and, and yourself to that. Then you're able to respond to it in real life. And that's really what they're trying to do. And to get rid of your individual self, you can't give, you lose part of yourself. That's part of the sacrifice, because you want to be a Marine. You wanna be part of the fighting force of your platoon, of the team. So, so part of sacrifice, I don't think a lot of people realize is you have to lose part of yourself. They have to give up part of yourself to, to have that transition.
That's interesting. I know that, I think you're absolutely right. I think one of the, one of the things that I had in my mind going in, it was a very like selfish perspective, right? It was like, I, me, I'm gonna do this, I wanna be a soldier. I'm gonna like, I'm gonna be the best at the shooting range or I'm gonna be the best at PT, da, 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 da. I'm gonna try to like be super soldier, whatever. And when I got there, I started realizing, like, that's what, not what they were incentivizing. They were, I could do everything right and I would still get in trouble and be dropping during pushups. Someone could do something else wrong and I'd get in trouble for what they did wrong, even if there was no way I could've, you know, done anything about it. And I thought, this isn't fair, this is bullshit. Why, why even try? If I'm gonna get in trouble anyways, why try to be the best? And it was like this whole concept where they just were breaking down any idea of I and molding you into the idea that like, win, lose or draw, you are a part of this team. If something happens to one of your guys, it happens to you. Like, it doesn't matter if you cross the finish line, if one of your guys does, you have to all cross the finish line. And you have to have this sense of doing it right for the team and not for you to be the one who did it right. You know, and so you're performing because of a sense of duty and respect to the whole. And not because maybe you'll beat first place or maybe you'll get ahead in this way. And they really, once I, I, once I was sort of beaten into this place where I sort of realized, oh, this is why, then I was able to make that transition. But yeah, in a lot of ways, basic training creates the stimulus and opportunity for growth. But you have to have that mind changed. Since not everyone did, I don't know how you guys, what your experience was. I know in the Army, we had a lot of guys that just, you know, they faked injuries, they ran away, they,
Hack it, man.
You know, couldn't hack it and they just decided that that was, you know, this, and so, and they fell out.
Yeah, we had that too. We had people that had medical reasons, real medical reasons, others that, you know, really just gave up. They went home. You know, there's a ceremony, this guy, they just, you gotta send home, you got relieved. And, you know, remember drill instructor, that guy just fucked himself for the rest of his life.
Yeah, he'll regret that, damn. Okay, so, so you graduate, now you're a Marine. And that, that's gotta be a really cool feeling, right?
Oh yeah, you go home.
Do you actually get your, wait, what, here, right, you're ready to go home? Do you actually get your, what do they call it, the eagle globe and anchor? You don't get that till you get to your line needed, right? Or do you get that when you graduate?
No, I got, I got it, no, I got it during graduation.
Graduation.
Yeah, graduation, they, they hand it to you. Cool. And then that's the first time you called a Marine from the person who's been calling you maggot for like the three months, for shit. Or whatever, you know? You're like, now I'm one of you, right? It's like, damn.
I don't think that there are a lot, I, I think that the basic training experience is very different now than when we were.
It is. Love is different.
I know everybody like says that, you know, things were tougher when I was in. But I think that we might've came in on the tail end of like, just, there was still a little bit of that old school, like, maybe this guy's actually gonna choke me kind of thing. You know, I was always kind of worried, I mean, I never was, nothing bad ever really happened, but I always had that like, oh my God, like, what if this guy actually does put me through a wall, you know? Like kind of sense of like fear, healthy fear and respect, you know? Cause that's like, the perception was there, you know? Where it was like, mom can't save you, you know, you're here, you're mine kind of thing. And it's like.
A healthy balance, it's interesting, I've been heard it that way, healthy fear and respect.
Yeah. Yeah, it was like, you know, so I think, I don't think it's that way anymore, but I don't really know it here. I mean, that's not fair to say, I mean, you think that they're, I think that, well, this is interesting. A lot of the guys I, I went to basic training with, I mean, I would've been five months away from full retirement if I'd stayed it, which is crazy. So about 10 years ago, a lot of my buddies I went to basic training with were drill sergeants. And I remember thinking, geez, that's crazy, you know? And so I know that those guys were in there, especially the combat veterans guys I served with. They know what the stakes are and they're, they're, I know they're gonna be preparing those guys well. So it's not really necessarily fair.
That's it right there, man. That's it, you know, nobody can make Marines other than Marines, right? Nobody understands, and same thing with our, you know, nobody's gonna create something of themselves other than the person that, that went through that.
Yeah.
Right? And it's a, it's a, it's from the, for the people looking from the outside, a lot of it doesn't make sense. And it, and it won't, because you have to go through it to understand, right?
There was just that controversy where they posted the buds guys going through the gas chamber. And I remember thinking like, that's the same thing that I did, you know? I went through the gas chamber, like, that's something everybody does. You go through there, the drill sergeants laugh at you and you have to say, my eyes are open, my arms are flapping. And you're, you know, there's stuff. The drill sergeants laugh at you and you have to say, my, my eyes are open, my arms are flapping and you're, you know, there's stuff goosin' out of everywhere. And it's kind of a little bit of torture and you're, you're, you know, but that's kind of like, that was a, a rite of passage and it's like, it was in the news and everything is, oh, this torture and this horrible stuff. And I was like, I know what it seems like, but it was such an important part of the process.
Normal. It's like, what torture? That's normal. What, what do you mean? We'll do that.
Right.
Are you telling me that's wrong? Cause like, and that's a, that's a great example of how unique the, the military community is, that the ones that serve that go through this kind of things because at the end of the day, man, the, the whole thing is how, how does that transition to the battlefield? Where you can't, you, you, you don't have as much control as you wish you had. You can prepare.
That's the ultimate litmus test, right? So
Yeah.
You graduate as a Marine and both of us served in combat in Iraq. Um, and I'm curious to hear like, can you, first of all, tell me a little bit about when you deployed, where you deployed, uh, and then, um, and you were in infantry unit. Um, and then just kind of what that experience is like. Let's just kind of talk about how you get to where you're going.
So my unit, we went to Ramadi in two thousand nine. We landed, I mean, trying to get the dates wrong. Great. Think we got there and we got in Kuwait, I think in April, believe, uh, twenty, two thousand nine. Um, we were supposed to be there for about a year. I got cut short. So we were one of the last like big infantry kind of waves that came into Iraq. And because a lot of our gear, I mean, it was being sent to, to Afghanistan, right? The focus was shifting way more to Afghanistan and trying to kind of scale back Iraq. And, you know, when we got there, you know, we had allied forces doing checkpoints and entering into the bases. We would lead our, our patrols. And by the time we got out, it was Iraqi forces. They were leading patrols. They were doing the checkpoints. And that made a lot of people nervous, right? But that was the whole point is giving them the responsibility to do all that. People in my unit were training, some of them, you know, to, and just a lot of challenges there. Uh, we did a lot of, so I, I'd say we got there a little bit after the party because there was no till in Ramadi.
Right. Which is one of the most
I did not experience.
Ramadi was some of the worst finding of the entire conflict.
Yeah, we, we probably got there maybe two or three phases after that. We relieved, um, an army unit. And, um, I personally did not see combat. I mean, we were out there quite often. We transitioned, uh, into mounted patrols. So I was driving MRAPs and seven tons and Humvees a few times, but mainly MRAPs. So if those that don't know, those are, you know, uh, you know, these large vehicles that has a V shape on the bottom that supposedly deter explosions because we, we were so hit by IEDs, us as, as, you know, allied forces. You know, we, we were devastated by IEDs and those MRAPs just couldn't come soon enough.
So what were some of your, for your, for some of your biggest challenges? Uh, was it, you know, fighting an enemy in a certain way? Was it training the partner forces or something else? What were some of your biggest challenges when you were deployed?
Well, I think the result of somewhat boredom because our job was more humanitarian at that point, building relationships. Um, so providing security for, for leadership to talk to the local sheiks and, and, you know, have a presence. And there was, uh, the hearts, you know, when the hearts and minds, right? Um, you know, there, there was some, some, there were some contacts with other members in my unit. Um, you know, a good friend of mine was hit by an IED. You know, we all came back, you know, but you know, he was driving as much as I were probably, you know, maybe more and they got hit. And, you know, I, I think I drove probably more than anybody else because I became a driver for, for my unit and, um, because I was the primary mode of transportation, I was out there quite often, like, you know, just probability in my mind. I was like, at some point I'm going to get hit by an IED. It's like, it's out there all the time and I thank God that I came back. Okay. Like nothing happened. And I think about,
Yeah.
the duality of being a warrior, but also just a human, right? And now looking back and dealing with a lot of my friends that have T B I, traumatic brain injury, they're going through PTSD. And I didn't, I don't have that. I'm very blessed not to have that. But the, the warrior side is like, you know, I wasn't tested. There wasn't, I didn't get to be in combat. But the human part of me is like, man, I'm, I'm glad I didn't. I don't want to know what would have happened. I don't know where I would be if I would be here. Or if we end up with, you know, T B I or PTSD, you know, so there's things you don't control. So I'm grateful because I'm in the position where I can help those that they go through that. And some of that is just random. It's, it's luck of the draw. Or, you know, or bad luck, you know, we were all there. We all signed up for it. Somebody get the shot and somebody, somebody don't. You know, so I think about that quite often, like, man, you know, I didn't really get the opportunity, but again, you know, I'm, I'm grateful for that.
Yeah. I mean, there's just no way around like when you're, especially as a Marine, again, where it's like so specific, like you really are trained to fight. That's what you're there for. Uh, and when you have that mentality and that mission and you don't get a fully feel like you, you know, were able to, to, to scratch that itch at the body, um, you know, the civilian, more grown up version of myself looks back on that kind of perspective. And it's kind of like how you were saying, realizes, you know, that, you know, is grateful and realizes that, you know, really that's, you know, you, um, it's, it's good, it's, it's good that you, you know, are okay and were able to have this thing. But also frankly, that, you know, just because you were bored, doesn't mean it wasn't really dangerous. I mean, you were in a very dangerous area and, you know, every single day you didn't know whether you were going to hit an IED. I mean, you really, it could have been, every moment could have been your last actually. Um, and you still
A sniper.
Right, a sniper.
Those, those, those ones are just pop and go.
Yes.
Right? I mean, there's things like, and be the, the, the rig vehicles to like, put the rifle through a tail, to a taillight, right? And you can't see where it comes from.
No, man.
Of course, like that, you know?
You gotta give yourself, I mean, you, despite all of that very real danger, you suited up and went out and you have the American flag on your shoulder in a place where it's probably the most dangerous place in the world at that time to be wearing the American flag. I mean, that in Afghanistan. And you were standing up and standing behind, literally wearing that flag, risking your life even while you're sleeping. You know, mortar round could come in any moment and you had to live with that for a long time. And, you know, you, that's, that, that is a being a warrior, to be able to suit up and do that in a selfless way as a part of a team in a combat zone. I mean, that's, that, that is amazing, you know, that you were showing up in that way. And that's huge. And honestly, the show of force, the presence, especially of a Marine unit, um, probably saved a lot of lives, probably kept a lot of bad things from happening because people just had learned at that point, you know, if you mess with these guys, you have to be ready to pay the consequences. And so, um, you know, your presence alone.
We're always ready.
Yeah.
You're always ready. And you plan before, every time before you leave your base, you have plans.
Yeah.
You know, then you have your backup plans and you have somebody, so you have your Q R F, which is, um, yeah, and it's, they're there because if you, if you hit, it hits the fan, if you need something back up, you call them, you call them, right?
Right.
So you always have a backup and you take turns. So you're out there in patrol, then you're Q R F and then you get a break basically. So, so generally you have these three phases. You sleep, Q R F, and then you're on patrol, right? And just kind of cycles through.
Yep. Yeah, no, it's kind of similar. I mean, you know, I was there, uh, maybe four or five years before and I was in Baghdad. But, um, and my, my deployment was, was a little more kinetic in that way. And it was just a different battlefield back then, I think. Um, but, you know, we talked a little bit earlier about having that Marine Corps, Army rivalry and all this and everybody, you know, you got people, people, some people might think, oh man, these guys hate each other, you know? Because of the way they talk about each other, this and that, but it's a real healthy rivalry and all that kind of cool stuff. But I can say without a shadow of a doubt, like I have a lot of respect for Marines. I love, I love Marines because I had the, uh, the pleasure of being able to fight alongside Marines. Uh, in Baghdad, we had, um, a group that came off a M U from, um, which is a Marine Expeditionary Unit, um, out of Australia. And they flexed up to Baghdad for a little while and they had Lab forty fives, uh, which are these, uh, you know, personnel, armored personnel carriers in Marine Corps used at the time. I don't even know if they still do. Um, and I, you know, these guys were in our area. They were just kind of like, hey, we're operating in your area. We're here to help. And that was when I really saw the difference between the Marines and other branches, because I physically saw the way that they behaved in the FOB and then out on patrol. And it was amazing to see like, in the base, we're walking around and we had, you know, our, our eye protection. We always had to have a weapon on us, but we could not, we didn't have to have, uh, any of our gear, you know, just a weapon, eye protection and at least one magazine. We could walk around the FOB, do whatever we wanted. The Marines were in full battle rattle every minute of the day, you know? And again, this was earlier on in the war, things were a little more kinetic, but like they wore all their stuff. They were ready to, to, to mount an assault at any time of the day. Always. And they were always in that mindset. And then when we were out on patrol, if we got into trouble or something has happened, it was amazing because I knew without a shadow of doubt that those guys were totally down to be in the fight. And that they would never give up on me, you know, that no matter what kind of bad situation I was in, if they were there, that they would die before they ever gave me a hundred percent. And they were like on, you know, and not every army unit, I mean, it is what it is. The army's a big place. And there are some units that have more of a mindset, combat mindset and mentality and some that don't. And it was like, not every unit that rolls around, you can count on and trust to be there, just like your own guys would be there for you. But I knew that any Marine unit that was there, they were going to be in for the fight. They would be able to slip right in and it was no problem. And, um, so seeing that and experiencing that for me was like, has always left this sense of respect for, for Marines and, you know, and a lot of love for those guys. They're really amazing to be able to experience that little bit of difference because it's a different culture, you know? Uh, so I, I, you know, as much as we kid about the rivalry, really it's, it's a lot of respect. Um,
It is. It's like siblings.
Yeah.
You love each other. You give each other a hard time.
Yeah.
You, you have to, you're just not going to give them a free pass.
Yeah. So, okay. So you, uh, so you, you, you ultimately get out of the Marine Corps, right? And, um, so you decided obviously not to make that a career. When you get out, did you have any idea where you were going to go? Or how did you end up getting to becoming a part of Navara's insurance or, now I said that wrong, it's not Navara's. It's not of it.
Narvaias.
Narvaias, Narvaias.
There you go. You got it. Yeah.
Narvaias.
Yeah, man.
How, how do you jump? Where's that gap from, from warrior to, to the insurance business in Napa?
Well, it all happened basically at the same time, but, um, my dad was working for another agency. It got bought out. Um, and that transition didn't go very well for a lot internally. And there was just a lot of unpredictability. And it's like, I don't know what to do here. I think I should go on my own. I have more control of what I'm doing. And that, that's what he did. And, and I'm looking to, to do something and, um, like, well, why don't we just do it together, you know?
Okay.
Um, and I think it worked out. We're still doing it. I mean, we started in two thousand seven. So my unit, because at the time it was a reservist, so we got activated late two thousand eight. We started business. We opened doors in January two thousand eight.
Wow.
And my unit got activated basically right after starting business.
Wow.
So I was like, wow, we just, what are we going to do? So again, you know, my family always had my back and they stepped in while I was away.
It's amazing.
So not only am I thinking about the mission, thinking of my family now, I got a business that I'm not, I'm out of.
Right.
That was supposed to be there to help start during, mind you, that a, a big economic like crisis.
Right.
And the financial sector, right? So, and there's a lot of stuff going on with insurance companies. It's just like,
Yeah.
You know, i- i- it's, it's just a lot of fires that you'd have to kind of be mindful of.
Right. Right. Uh, so ultimately you were able to have your family covered down and you got through that initial phase with business starting up. Um, can you talk to me a little bit about some of the biggest challenges, getting that business started to where you're now kind of up and running, kind of somewhat smoothly as a real business? What were some of those big challenges and things that you learned kind of in that process?
So we started inside a closet, converted closet inside a discount store that we turned into an office, our desk. Like next to each other, almost shoulder to shoulder. We were there for, I don't know, man, almost a year. And then we got into the office where we're now, and then we moved next door and then we expanded into two suites and, um, it, it, that's over a long period of time, but the, some of the challenges were how do we grow and how do we brand ourselves? I mean, we're, you know, we're immigrant families. So, you know, we, we, we're very tied into our culture and that bubble. How do we go outside the bubble and, and find credibility outside the bubble when you don't have those relationships? Um, you know, because you, you know, people tend to do business with people that they feel comfortable with, that, that they have some kind of connection, whether it's culture. Somebody looks like you or they're, you know, they, they're, they're from the same school, you know, whatever that connection is, right? But how do I connect with, with more people? That was always the challenge to, to grow, expand outside your bubble. And I think a lot of businesses have that, that challenge, but we, I definitely felt that.
Cool. So how, how were, how were you able to kind of crack through that and, and to, to reach that audience outside of just, you know, uh, maybe that, that immediate audience that made most sense?
You have to be okay with being uncomfortable. You gotta get in front of people. You gotta, you gotta walk in a room and, and you've never been in that room before. And maybe a lot of people don't look like you. Right? And you have to be like, okay, you know, I'm, I'm going to find my place here and I'm going to build relationships. I'm going to build trust and I'm going to work on, on, you know, being part of the team and, 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 and be reliable.
Right.
Um, so there's, so you join different organizations, you, you give back to the community, you show that you care and you start building trust and relationships. And people start counting on you. People start remembering you and then opportunities would come. And, and that's what I saw happen, but it, it takes investment and time and some faith and some being uncomfortable. You know, growth happens through friction and being uncomfortable, you know, not, not through comfort, you know?
Yeah, this is kind of a common theme in, in your story, one that I noticed in life in general, but I see it real strongly in your story. It's like, you have this strong foundation and I keep thinking, when I'm thinking about you and your story and, and who you are, fingers, what I know, uh, so far, it's like, how important was that family structure? And, uh, that, um, that you had these two parents that understood the importance of like creating that base of trust and love and showing by example, like your dad, having all these challenges, deciding to have the long vision, to stay steady when things were rocking all over the place and the stakes were high. And that obviously rubbed off on you, right? And, and you're able to sort of replicate that and use that to your advantage in your own way, in your own life. Uh, and like, I just keep thinking, wow, it's amazing. How important was that family foundation? And those things that you have to learn from them. And then the military kind of reinforced that. We're talking, you and I have been talking so far a lot about stress, contrast, um, challenge as being the thing that allows you to grow and really have an upward trajectory and get through things that are less than, less than desirable, that, that suck, you know, uh, and to how, how to view those now in hindsight as some of the greatest opportunities that, that you have. And these are the kind of common themes that I'm seeing. Uh, and I think they're just so, they're so important. Uh, and it's cool to see them working in your life story.
And I'm just grateful and blessed to have those opportunities to be challenged and, and not always to meet those challenges. Cause you know, you, Baylor is a great teacher.
Sure.
You know, it's a great teacher. So, um, failure is part of life and, you know, it's how you, how you learn from that, how you bounce back and, and you become stronger or weaker, you know?
Yeah.
So, you know, i- i- it's exciting. Uh, I like the, the chaos of, of it all, whether it's, you know, raising a family, a business and public service, or just trying to be somewhere where you're, you can help.
Yeah. So service is a theme too with you, right? Like, um, and it's interesting because, you know, I mean, obviously the Marine Corps was a way for you to serve and to, um, selfless service, duty, honor, respect, all those things, really important. Um, and you become an entrepreneur and a businessman and you mentioned that you have the sense of serving the community, of getting out and trying to give back to the community and that that yields, um, a lot in return. It helps you with your business, your reputation. It's all about relationships, but giving back specifically. And it seems like you've always had this sense of duty to give back to the country, to your community, um, to people that are struggling or having a more difficult time, right? So with that sense of service, it makes a lot of sense to me now, looking at like the fact that you ended up getting into politics at the local level and, um, you know, ran for office and ultimately were for office and ultimately were elected to the Napa City Council, uh, which is amazing, really cool. But, um, so it's just continued this tradition of service for you. Can you talk to me about your twenty eighteen city council run, right? And you, you failed in that, right? But you ran, wh- what made you decide to run? And then talk to me a little bit about that whole experience of meeting that, not getting elected and then making the decision to continue to, to go again for city council a couple of years later.
Yeah, so in the business, you know, I, it's a relationship building kind of business, right? Insurance, people got to trust you. So you hear, you have conversations, very intimate conversation about people's families' situation, their business situation. Cause I, I, I really started building my book of business on insurance business, small businesses, right? So I saw the challenges in their local economy, saw challenges within, in the housing and just a lot of things that, that could happen locally and influenced locally and, and started seeing a theme there. And there's one time where I'm sitting in my office and thinking while I'm working, like, man, I gotta do more, like the sense of call, the sense of duty, the calling was up, was, was there, but it's like, I have to do more. You know, at that point, that was like me saying, I need to be more busy, I want more. And I just running, I'm not running a business, like what am I thinking? But still that, that spark was there. And there was this, uh, vacancy at city council at the time. And we had somebody that got promoted to, uh, board supervisors, that's Alfred Pedroza. He was the first Latino to state council and the youngest. And, um, I'm thinking, well, you know, we might lose our Latino voice up there. Well, we're gonna lose our Latino boys, but I think, I thought, I know we have a lot of leaders in our community, from Latino community, that, that will be amazing and filling that role to make sure that, that we have that white representation, you know, a wide, you know, um, uh, lens and, and be able to, you know, address all kinds of needs. But I was disappointed that only a few applied. And, but I was very disconnected at that point, right? I haven't really grown into the role that I'm in now. Uh, so I had a lot to learn, I was very green. I'm thinking, you know what? Well, I'm complaining about this in my real time, I'm complaining about this, I better have a, 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 I better be part of the solution, you know? So I applied for that vacancy, it was my first time at city hall, my first time at public comment, you know, and I'm thinking, I don't know what I'm getting myself into, but you know, I'm gonna dive right in.
Right.
And, um, I didn't get, obviously I didn't get that, that appointment, it went to Mary Laurel's at the time. Um, and, um, I'm thinking, okay, I, I'm interested. So I applied for, for a commission, I was in Pakistan Iraq for a while, and that was a really great way to me, for me to really find out that was something I wanted to do. Because it's a very lightweight. Yeah, I mean, you, you have meetings once a month, oh no, at that time it was every other month. But it's a public meeting, the Brown Act, all those rules apply, the same on city council, it's just a very lighter role, right? During advisory role to the city council. Um, so it's, so it's like, um, uh, it, it was a great way, an introduction for me to realize, okay, is this something for me? So then from there, I did citizens academy that taught me all about local government, did, um, leadership Napa Valley, gave me a good view of whole Napa Valley. Um, so I started taking all these different classes and, and, and learning who's who, just really educating myself on what's going on, so, so I'm more aware. When I ran in, in twenty eighteen, I announced seventeen really early, before anybody did. And like, who is this kid? You know, nobody really knew who I was. So it took me, and I knew I needed to do it early because I needed to allow time for people to get to know me. But I didn't have a lot of relationships at the time. I had to prove myself, I had this big mountain to climb. And, you know, I, I came short, but I was like, I'm not done climbing this mountain. You know, I felt I had a lot of momentum and the momentum came a little late, uh, I felt like it wasn't over. I need to stay involved. So stay involved and, um, we, I served on the general plan advisory committee, a twenty year plan for a city in Napa, which is a very important document. It's basically the business plan for a city for the next twenty years. Uh, so I served on that and taught me a whole lot. I mean, that's like, you know, that's like the, the bones, the nervous system of, of everything, right? And it's, it's incredible to really be part of that. And then I ran and, you know, I think I proved to people that I was serious about this, that I was willing to do the work, to understand the issues and, you know, really enjoyed being that, and that, that leadership. Now we're stewards of public resources and it's not about me, it's about how I, um, to, how do I put this? It's, I, I'm not, I, I'm serving as a council member, right? That seat there is representative of anybody that can fill that role to, to do good by the people, right? So it, it is a, a position filled. It's not me, you know, it's not like, you know, you're the king, you always will be the king and, and there's roles, like you earn that spot, you, you, you do it for a term and if you do well, you might get another term. But it's always a duty to fill that role the best you can, uh, you know, and it's not about yourself, it's about.
It sounds like you have this understanding of the, the importance of the public office and that stewardship, you know, it's really bigger than any one person, but it also sounds like you understand the importance of, of, you know, which person is filling those slots does actually matter. Uh, you know, you mentioned that you felt like you wanted to have a Latino voice, uh, in the city council and that was important. So there's, there's obviously an aspect of the individual that is coloring that, that, that role, but, and I think this is really cool because you also have an awareness of, you have an awareness of how important that is, but, but also an awareness of how important it is, uh, to understand that it, it's not about, it's not about the individual as much as it is, um, executing the job in a way that, that is selfless and has a bigger picture type of mentality. And that's difficult because I think a lot of people confuse those two things. They're both important, I think. Uh, they both matter. Anybody who tells you, you know, it could just be a, a blank person, doesn't really matter who's in there, I, I think he's just lying. I think it matters a lot. But also it really matters that you have people there that can step back from their own filters and their own personal ideas and try to serve the community in a way that really respects the idea of the office too. And that's a challenge, that's, that's a difficult thing to do.
Yeah.
Seems like you have an awareness of that. Um, I'm curious, you get elected, so you get elected twenty twenty-two?
Twenty twenty.
Twenty twenty, okay, sorry. Yeah, that's right, eighteen twenty. So, you know, obviously I can't imagine, this is gonna be a huge learning curve for you, it's a totally new world, I imagine. Uh, were there some things, can you talk a little bit about some things that you went into the experience, now you're on the city council, you're starting out with an idea and that that idea was kind of, your thought or idea about what it would mean to serve in that capacity was totally changed through the experience? You re, you know, did you have any realizations of like, oh, I was, I thought this, but now my experience has shown me this, this is what it's really about, in, in good and bad ways, I'm sure. Can you talk a little bit about that?
Yeah, the, the challenges while being in that position and what you want to accomplish, uh, is that you have to navigate so many obstacles and some for a good reason. I mean, you, you want transparency, you want to have public trust, but that limits you in how you can do business, right? Because the, you know, the Brown Act is, is doing, conducting business in front of public, right? So there's limited things you can do with your other decision makers. Like you can't have conversations, like I can't do a podcast with another council member and talk about certain things, um, right? And have another one chime in, like that's, that's conducting city business without a public posted meeting and have the audience or citizens there because they're, they always have to be part of the process, right? They're the unelected, unelected decision maker, they have to be present. That, that is how we continue with democracy is the people were always there. They're the greatest equalizer. And that's why you always have public comment. You have public comment, you can talk whatever you want, doesn't matter, you have to schedule it. If you have an agenda, there's a section, maybe you come in, you can talk about whatever you want, that is your right. And, and I, and I, and that's what I love about it because that's how you uphold our democracy and that happens. But I think about founding fathers, I think about not just what they did to craft our nation, but what, what we can do in each town across our country to maintain those values and the opportunity and the freedom to, to be able to, to challenge government, to question government, to be involved and, and contribute to government. But that does make certain challenges when I want, you know, I have this great idea, but there's a lot of laws, right? There's a lot of laws with homelessness that we can, we cannot do. There's all jurisdictions, there's turf battles, right? In, in a sense, like we can't go in there without, you know, whoever's jurisdiction that is, right? Even if it's affecting my constituents. And, and, and so there, there's a lot of layers, there's a lot of barriers, so, so you have to find ways to get things done, often with limited resources.
Right.
Right? If we fixed all our sidewalks in the state of Napa, that would be way beyond our budget and we'd be broke, right? And then we can't pay our police, you know? So it's, it's, obviously you have to plan out, you have to, you, you have to prioritize. And when you make those decisions, uh, some people often feel like they're being neglected. But you have to be able to have a conversation, that's why I always tell people, come and listen or, or sign up or look at newsletters and, 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 you know, be more aware so you're not left out.
Right.
And there's a decision being made without your input.
Right. So again, that, that really, I mean, it sounds to me like that structure and that foundation, you mentioned the founding fathers and how these ideas need to sort of be manifest in our actions today, that's really important to maintain the integrity of that at the local level, which I agree with, I think is really great. Um, and so that's kind of the big picture, understanding the selfless component. Now what about the, um, you know, it sounds like to you, it's the Latino component, um, is very important to you, especially here in Napa, right? Or we have a decently large Latino population here in particular. Um, and, and can you talk to me a little bit about what, what that means to you as now, now somebody who's a representative in office? How, how have you seen? What, what do you think about, uh, what do you think are some of the ways that, that, um, that, that, that we can sort of, um, bring, what are some of the issues? What are some of the most important issues?
Yeah.
You know, good and bad that you see from your perspective, um, for, for the Latino community in particular in Napa?
But I think if, if you look at just the general challenges with, you know, uh, people's lack of trust in government, sometimes you don't know if it's your local government, if it's your, you know, uh, the county, if it stays regional, if it's, you know, sometimes people think, ah, you know, they're doing, it's, it's their fault or, you know, or it's just the government generally, I hate the government, right? Uh, because, but it's really, um, it, it could be just your local elected that you could talk to and resolve the issue, not the president of the United States, you know? But if you look at that through more challenges, when there's a language barrier, cultural barrier, that the stress grows even larger.
Right.
Because compounded by those added challenges.
Okay.
So how do we kind of reduce those challenges so we can include everybody in the decision process? We can include everybody in the public process, those public meetings, so we have, you know, David's input and we have your neighbor's input that happens to be like my family that came to this country, right? And are also trying to be productive members of, of our community. So that way everybody has an opportunity. But when you have barriers, whether it's language, it's culture or other areas, or it's just the perception, perception of that.
Sure.
Right? Remember going back to business, people like to do business with people when there's a connection with, with, maybe they look like themselves or they, they go to the same school, whatever, right? In government, if you're representatives, if you can't connect with them, if maybe through visually, they don't look like, hey, I, I can't connect to the person, maybe they don't, they won't understand me. They won't, they're, they're not judge my issues, they're not gonna, we can't communicate, therefore I'm not even gonna try. So you gotta, you kind of wanna try and break down those barriers and, and with having a segment of population that is Latino or, you know, even part of that speaks mainly in Spanish, or as, as their first language, you know, it can help kind of break down some of those barriers so we can be better public service, right? Our government and, and, um, it, it's representation.
Right. To, to better have a representation of the people that are here, you know, it's like you kind of mentioned, I thought it was interesting, you know, just the perception of, well, if I see people that don't speak Spanish or don't have any idea about my culture or just are different than me, there's just a disconnect there. They're not gonna understand, a lot of assumptions, right? So just.
A lot of assumptions, that's correct.
Yeah, just being able to, it sounds like, like a big thing that, that you can do is, is sort of act as that liaison to show that while there are obvious differences and, and, and that actually is a good thing, that, that there are connections that you may not be seeing, that you can be a part of the process and, and be accepted in that way. So, um, you know, I think it kind of makes me think about that, one of these things I imagine has got to be a big challenge for you is that the bottom line is, you do have very different people, different backgrounds, different perspectives, different needs and wants, different stages in life, uh, in one community. And obviously when it comes to public policy in the community, you, you make a public policy decision, you're a part of making a pop public policy, policy decision. Uh, you put that into action, you put that into law and, um, and it affects the community. It's going to negatively impact or at least be perceived to negatively impact parts of the community. And sometimes not even small parts, sometimes it could negatively impact in the eyes of a large part of the community. How do you like balance that or what is, can you talk to me a little bit about that play? Because it's just the reality, like you're never going to satisfy everyone's needs, you just always gonna be somebody who gets a short end of a stick when it, it, from one point of view at least, even if it's just their point of view, because how they perceive things does matter in their life. It, it, it does. So can you, can you just kind of talk a little bit about that? Like how that's a, is that a challenge? How have you found it to be more or less of a challenge than you thought?
That was a challenge. That was a challenge because you're not gonna make everybody happy, but my process first is make sure that if somebody is likely to disagree with me, that they have an opportunity to, to speak, to, to state their case, that I listen to it with an open mind. One, because I could learn something, right? I may see something, I might be taught something I haven't seen before. But two, it is part of our democratic process to, to be heard, to state your case, to be part of the debate. Um, and then you look at, um, through my own experience, through research, through staff work, through public input, you balance all these different elements with the information you have at the time and try and make the best decision. Cause you have to make a decision, you can't not make a decision, right? So what is the best decision at that time, right? Based on the goals, your legislate, legislative priorities, where, what do we need to accomplish? And, and what things will be changed, right? So if I see something that may be coming down that, that I need more information, I'll reach out to members of the community, hey, what do you think about this? Is, is this something, how would this affect you? What are your thoughts? There's so much resources out there from people in different industries that can give me so much insight, that you have to be proactive and make that phone call and say, hey, give me some information on about this, what's, what's your take on this? I still started kind of sampling from different places to get kind of a wider perspective on things. Cause I, I may have my initial thought.
Right.
Right? And that could come from a bias, that could come from my own experience. But, you know, that's just human nature, right? You have your, your, your initial reaction.
Sure.
But you have to build from that, you can't just say, this is the only way. Think, okay, I kind of have to put that aside and kind of lock in a box and then put on my public service hat and, and, and get feel what's going on in the community.
Yeah.
And hear from the people that voted me to represent them and, and do right by that process. And I tell people that you may not always agree, but you will be heard, we'll have a process to make sure it's fairly done, right?
You know, I, I, I think that, um, I agree with, with what you're saying as far as like what, the, how that process is really important. I, I, maybe I'm just, you know, I don't think, I wish more politicians, especially, you know, at the local level, but even in, in, uh, you know, uh, statewide office or nationwide office, would really value that, um, cause I think it's so important, like you're mentioning. Be able to have your own biases, have your own perspective, opinion, initial thought, that's great, we're all individuals and that part is important. You know, the fact that you are who you are with your, your background and with your unique perspective is actually a benefit to the city council, it is actually important for the reasons that we talked about and for other reasons, right? Uh, but then to be able to have a process that brings in this, you know, uh, that honors that idea of everyone, whether they agree or disagree, being involved and being heard in a genuine way that allows you to pick up on maybe a new perspective, maybe even if a new perspective, maybe even if it doesn't change your mind on the issue, it might color your perspective on the issue in a different way that helps you connect with other people and their experience. Um, and um, and I think that's really cool and, you know, I'm glad that we do have leaders, especially at the local level, that do think that way, you know, as somebody who, you know, myself, I've I've been involved, I mean, a little bit in interacting with local government, in having, you know, disagreements and things like that with local government. And and so I think that, and and I have felt that that I have interacted with people that I felt didn't necessarily prioritize things that way, but I have also interacted with people that I felt did, and I can tell you that that made a big difference, made a huge difference. Uh, um, and and so I'm grateful to have more people like you in office that that can behave in that way. And, you know, even though in the local level, politics is different from like, let's say, the state level and 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 national level, it's less about political party, it's more about really like, it's really about the city's plan and the sort of ecosystem that is the city specifically. And so, but it still is, bottom line, it still is very heavily tied to larger political happenings and organizations and so on and so forth, from from a funding point, from a structure point, from a networking point. Uh, and those, those things are tied in to politics at the local level. Right now, especially, we have this environment in in our country where it just is really tense. It's very hyper politicized, hyper polarized, people's emotions are all over the place. Um, there there's a lot of this, it's just, it's just a lot of bad energy right now. Um, and, you know, I'm curious to get your your take on like, because you're, and I've known you to be the kind of person that can really in a very mature way separate these things and go about business in a way where you allow yourself to be an individual, but also allowed to have that bigger perspective and responsibility for all people, uh, provide a space and platform that that it that makes people feel included, um, and that allows for more connection, even if people are have diversion ideas, even if there's like a serious disagreement, um, that you can be an individual and be strong in your conviction, uh, in your perspective, but also like, also accept and connect with others as well. So like, for example, you know, um, you know, I'm sure that there's a lot of things that you and I really see eye to eye on, and there's probably a lot of things, politically speaking, that we don't, right? And we're both very strong individuals. So on, you know, but but I I always feel a sense of openness, a sense of uh, respect, um, a sense of admiration and community and kinship, and I don't ever feel unsafe, you know, talking to you or being around you, but also knowing that there might be some things that that we really do disagree on. And I always, I just thought to myself, man, I wish there was more of that, where it's like this healthy ability to say, look, I I see you as a human and I value you as a human fundamentally. I see you as an American and I appreciate and I value you as an American. I know that I can disagree with you on X, Y, and Z, even in like a real strong way, and I can hear some harsh criticism your way, or maybe have to deal with some public policy, for example, that you may vote for that I didn't want or vice versa. And and that, that can be okay. That can actually be a part of a healthy, connected relationship, we can be connected, we can care for each other, we can see each other as a a for uh, the men that we are, you know, you're somebody who's a a father, who's a a leader, an entrepreneur, um, and somebody who has fought for this country, all these things that I have a lot of respect for. And being able to then go ahead and and feel comfortable engaging and being who I am in front of you, or or not in front of you, or, you know, just out in the community, knowing that you're never going to get lost in the whirlwind of conflation and he said, she said, and all this kind of negative polarizing politics that if this, then that, right? If you vote this way, then that, if you think this way on a particular topic, then you're the X, Y, and Z. Because I feel like that just, that just, that that tears apart people and communities. And I know like for me, I would love to see more of like, um, I would see, I love to see more of like, uh, individuals being able to feel comfortable being themselves, comfortable speaking their truth, even if it contrasts with popular opinion, but also feeling connected to the community and the people that they do disagree with, because it's just a, it's a real big issue right now. So as a leader at the local level here, as somebody people look to, someone who's making policy decisions or contributing to policy decisions that are being made, um, can you talk a little bit about about that culture that's going on right now and how how you might see that we can touch, start taking meaningful steps forward in connecting again? And being able to like, agree to disagree and that American process? And that kind of re-grounding ourselves back again, because I have hope for that. Um, and and I'm just curious to get your perspective on it.
Yeah, that's a great question. Um, the first thing I would say is trust in our democratic process. I mean, we have, I believe, in the experiment of our country, that the of our democracy, and that changes and the the tide of that could change in each election. Um, but we have to trust the process. We have to allow each other to be who we want, we want, need to be, even in disagreement, you know, and and not um, prosecute, you know, people because they're different.
Right.
We have the ability to debate and state our case and allow majority to win. And that that is how it should be. Um, some people try to circumvent that when it it doesn't come out their way at the local level, at all all kinds of levels, right? And there's there are processes um, that allow us to do that um, in a in a trusted way. Um, oftentimes, I think the age of information, how fast things travel, you can provide misinformation so so fast, right? One side says this is wrong, the other side says this is wrong. But it is in those public meetings that we have to exercise our right to state our case there, not on social media, right? We have to exercise our right, because or else we're not doing that service to the people that found this country. We then, we we go back to other countries that are are still fighting the fight, right? They're not that, the wish they had, the problems that we had to to with with the right to exercise the right to debate in a in a public forum without without the fear of prosecution. And that goes at each level, so, you know, there's been some contentious issues at city council, and there's a lot of people that disagree with me and, oh, there'll be names and stuff, and you know what?
Sure, sure.
I welcome all that, why? Because, hey, you are part of the community for for better or for worse, we're all in this together.
Yep.
You have the right to say what you want. I'm gonna take it all in, you know? Um, and if there is a case of if something's incorrect, and I if I have the facts, I'll correct it, I'll provide the correct information, you know? But that's all in still, the the ability to exercise our right to 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 state our case, however that will be, and if you have enough people that become the majority, then guess what? You get to be part of the decision-making process. You know, I I think that the the respect that we need to have for each other's differences needs to be kind of, we have to have um, a reminder of that, we have to allow ourselves to say it's okay to have different opinions. Right? It doesn't have to break relationships, it doesn't have to cause chaos on the Now, if there are things in the system that need to be changed, guess what? You have the freedom, you have the the right to be in a position where you can change that. And that's true for everybody. It becomes harder for some people and others for different reasons, but you can do that, right? So that's a loaded question, and I mean, I think I can answer it so many different ways.
Right, it's a complex thing, yeah.
Yeah, but I I think at the core is it's respect each other um, uh, as Americans, as people that want to live here and be part of our communities or our country. And, yeah, we can have different opinions, you and I can have, we we can debate, that's okay. You know, I'm not, I'm not gonna hate you for it, I'm gonna respect your differences, I'm gonna have, I'm gonna state my case, you're gonna state your case. Um, I might get a little heated, but then we walk away, shake your hand, and the world goes on and we continue to work. What I say is don't burn bridges, try to build relationships, especially with those you disagree with, because you'll at some point, more, at least my my role, will have to work with that person.
Right.
And if you can have respect, and if you can have trust, and even in in disagreements, you're better able to work with that person.
Right.
Imagine disagreeing with somebody and not trusting that person, and not respecting that person, and having to try and get something done.
It's that
Forget it.
That's that, what you just highlighted right there, I think is is um, very relevant for today's age, and I think it's kind of, I think we're kind of both funneling down to the heart of the matter, which is where I was trying to get. And that is like, like, that creates so many layers of fear, this this trust is huge. But it's like, what builds trust? And what builds trust isn't actually um, uh, getting your way all the time, right? It's not somebody codepending you, okay? Um, telling you what you want to hear, right? It's actually a a a, you know, it's actually the opposite of that, like, real love and real trust building involves bit uh, healthy boundaries. Because if I know that I establish healthy boundaries, I say like, these are my boundaries. I know that I can protect myself if I need to protect myself. If Bernie's coming at me in a way that's dangerous and I need to draw boundary, I have the power as a human, as an individual, to do that, and so I'm okay there. So barring that, with that confidence, with that self-confidence, with that knowing of myself as an individual, I could let go of some of those layers of fear around having a disagreement. And step forward and say, say, it's okay for me to be involved in this conversation, because I am safe. No matter what you say, no matter how you act toward me, and I'm safe. And then that, when you find someone like yourself, who kind of, from what I've experienced, kind of have a similar feeling, where you're you're confident in yourself, um, I'm pretty sure that you know and understand that you can draw your own boundaries and and make those decisions for yourself. And so you can freely engage with others and feel safe in that way, right? And so like, we can then have that conversation, we can have those agree disagreements, whatever, and then still um, have that layer of trust that's there. It's, and it allows for the process that you were talking about to happen. And it just seems like there are so many um, people that just don't have that trust in others right now, because of a lot of these, you know, like you talk about social media and a lot of these if this, then that, you know, you're you're this if you vote this way, um, or if you think this way, then you're just that, or whatever it is. But the reality is much different than that, like, you know, and so somehow, there's got to be a way, it might just be leading by example, like you're doing, right? Being the person you are, but there's got to be a way to try to peel back some of those layers of fear, so that we can have trusted disagreements, trusted differences, you know, and see that, you know, if I if I think about the other way around, sometimes if you think about trying to figure out what you want, it's easier to just name all the things you don't want, and it helps you filter in the direction you do. So it's like, if I'm thinking about like political disagreements, or ideological disagreements, or whatever it might be, um, you know, I I can kind of think about like, um, uh, uh, oh gosh, I just lost my train of thought. But I'm trying to think about, um, you know, what I don't want, I don't want, there it is, I don't want you, Bernie, to be me. Like, I don't want you to think like me, you know what I mean? I don't want you to have the same, like, I am me, and I love being myself and having my perspective. I know it's not the only perspective, I know I'm part of the team and a group. But but it's it's it's, I feel good about being who I am, and I don't want you to think like me, that would be if everyone in the world just thought like me, I'd be kind of boring, like this boring echo chamber, right? The fact that there is contrast, we talk about things like diversity, and I know that that word is kind of like, people have different definitions for it, but diversity of perspective, diversity and and cultural background in in uh, in all of these
Open debate.
Different people, right? Like, like, that is cool. Like, it's good to me that other people disagree with me and have different perspectives, I think that's great, I don't wish for them to think like. So I don't ever have this need to try to force them to think like. You know, I just say it's my responsibility to share my honest perspective.
Yeah.
And to share it freely.
Absolutely.
Understand that, you know, you have, you do have freedom of speech, but so do other people. And sometimes what you say is gonna elicit a response, it might be some things you don't like to hear, and it might, you know, but but uh, anyway, so so uh, I think that trying to find a way to to have a community of people that know that it's okay to be different, and that we can still be connected. And that that, you know, nobody has to try to get people to think their way, or to do everything that they want, because that's not really what we want, you know? Um, anyways, that's just my random thought, I don't know how you how you think about that, but.
It's, I mean, we have to, we learn, you know, how do we get better at what we're doing, how do we get better at life is some, some of it's trial and error, some of it's through mentoring, through a difference of of um, whether it's your perspective, you learn something different than what you already know, and you grow. You don't grow by just staying the same, it's contradictory. So we have to have the healthy debate, the difference in opinions, because we'll learn something. We'll learn that either you're on the right track, or you need to grow, or or like, I didn't think about that before. Or you're, you have self doubt, and somebody kind of confirms that you're doing the right thing. And you remove the self doubt, right? Because you saw or heard somebody say something different, they gave you a different view on something. So we have to have that, that that's that's the foundation of of our country.
Sure.
And um, it's it is hard to see that, uh, some of that, it's kind of been um, torn down, you know? But I I, you know, I'm I'm lucky with my colleagues that there are differences in in some some areas of, I know, how we we want to govern and policies, we talk through it.
Good.
And there's respect, right? There's mutual respect, there's there's no, I don't feel that somebody's scheming behind my back, right? We we talk, you know, and the times that we can all talk, and and, you know, you you get the sense of i- if somebody's doing something behind your back, and I know, you don't, I don't, I don't have that, I don't have to watch my back.
That's good, that's a good feeling. Um, I'm curious, uh, just lastly, to kind of like get an idea of, um, you know, what it, what is it, what's your vision, you know, for the future here for yourself as far as a businessman, politician? And what do you, what's your next couple of steps that you're, you know, envisioning for yourself?
You know, I love action and getting things done, but I you often find me in the future, you know, in my my own head, and what 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 can we do? When I, you know, there's different layers here in me with my family, just want to raise my kids, keep them safe and raise them to be good people and productive people, right? People that that respect and love and and can work and 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 be who they want to be. Um, grow my business to provide more jobs and and contribute and 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 help other peoples through my service. And with 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 the city of Napa, you know, there's a lot of potential. You know, when you look at our park systems, there, you know, we have a lot of parks, but that has evolved and and as as there's more pressure with building and and housing, we have to find ways to provide services to our families, to our kids. Parks is, it's a very great way to do that. Um, so I have a vision of improvement of parks, you know, we, there's a lot of culture and music and wine and food that, you know, that provides jobs, that provides entertainment, that provides a quality of life. And how do we keep that going, but but make sure that's done in a productive way that that we don't overdo it? You know, there's a balance to things. So create good policy that continues to create opportunities for people to succeed, to live their life and and provide for their family. Um, so, you know, again, government, you know, for me, it's not like in the private sector, I don't get paid more or less for one policy or the other, right? It's not like commission, you know, we raise taxes, I'll get paid more, it's not like that. You know, you know, and and how do you do that job to leave that job better than when you took it? You know, uh, and there's a lot of challenges, right? We have areas where, you know, there there's buildings that have broken down, you know, that that are in bad shape, and how do we work with those owners to get that activated right at home for somebody? How do we improve our traffic? You know, and and that's a big one, traffic, sidewalks, you know, with limited resources and using technology and tools and we have, there are laws that we have to follow, we can't just put a stop sign somewhere, we have to have a study. It is illegal to do that without going through certain steps.
Sure.
Somebody says, we need a stop sign now, okay, well, let's see if that is the best way to do that, you know, the You know, the concern is, you kind of peel it back, the concern is that they're speeding as there's dangerous driving activity. How do we change that behavior? Could be a stop sign, it could be a speed bump, it could be something else, right? So it's just a matter of of understanding it at a a a technical level, trusting in the staff, the professionals you hired to do that, that are trained or educated in that space, and then make that decision that's best for that situation. So my vision is always, you know, try and create good public policy and just be be a nice person when when reaching to your constituents, because there's a lot of pressure, right?
So you have any uh any political aspirations beyond city council, or is that something that you're still considering?
Nothing high, man. I mean, anything where I can drive home the same day after a meeting.
Okay, yeah.
Right? Like, local, I won't say local, you know, I mean, I think being the president of the United States would be a really cool job, but you know, it's not, it's not for me. I love that, I love to do that, but 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 it's not for me, you know, in a different lifetime.
Well, maybe governor, that might work.
Oh, man, that's, I I guess Sacramento's not too far away.
Yeah, it's not.
No, no, yeah, right?
Okay. Okay, cool, man. I, you know, um, I think, I mean, what an incredible story, in a lot of ways, it's it makes me really, it makes me very proud of of this country that your unique story was able to happen the way that it did um here in this country. It makes me proud, you know, to be American and um and I just think it's a really cool story that a lot of people will be able to connect with. Um, and for those of you who didn't know who you were, who might watch this, you know, now they do, and what are some ways that people can contact you?
Yeah, email.
Email?
Yeah, NapaBernie@gmail.com, it's pretty, pretty simple, and and Instagram, NapaBernie707, you know, and then and Facebook, just my name. I try to be available on different platforms depending on people's preferences.
Sure.
So it's pretty easy to get a hold of me, I mean, you can find me through my business info online, Narvias Insurance, you can find me through citenapa.org website, council members, right? Or just search my name on your favorite platform.
Right. And uh lastly, I just like to allow the guests to kind of give one last nugget of wisdom, one last thing that, you know, if you could, you just offer to the world, it could be something super simple, super basic, or whatever it is that you'd like to share with others that might be listening, uh, as as some sort of wisdom or something that you've learned in your life that's benefited you.
Surround yourself with people that that love you, that will take, you know, that that look out for you, but also people that will help you improve yourself, people that are, find somebody that's that's where you want to be and and learn from that person. So surround yourself by a good team, family, friends, there's mentors, business, you know, wherever. Find those leaders and try and make a connection with them. If there's chaos or negativity in life, you have to cut it out. You have to find a way to cut that out and surround yourself with people that will help you get to your goals.
Awesome, that's great advice. All right, well, hey, I really appreciate your time. I know you're a busy guy.
Thanks.
Thanks for coming out, man, and um we will get this up and out and share it with people and I'll get you links so you can share it with whoever you think might be interested to. But again, really, really appreciate it. I've always uh have a lot of love and respect for you as a person and, you know, very proud of your story. I think it's amazing, man, I get to know a little bit more about you today, which which is awesome. And so um thank you for coming on, I really appreciate your time.
Thanks for being here, the feeling is mutual and, you know, keep um looking at your other ones because I'm gonna get to hear from more people. But thanks for letting me be here and share my story.
All right, brother. Well, we'll take care, we'll see ya.
Take care.
Bye.